All right, welcome everyone to our special meeting Monday, August 4th, 2025 here in the city of Liberty Lake. We will note that the meeting is being held here in person at City Hall as well as remotely. For those of you online who are joining us, we will take testimony online here in just a couple of minutes. Before we do that, we'll start with our invocation followed by our pledge of allegiance. Please stand. Heavenly Father, we're thankful for the opportunity to meet as a community tonight. We ask for your blessing as we discuss the issues of the city that we can work together to come up with the best possible solution for our city residents and our community. In Jesus' name, amen.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, again, welcome everyone. We will call to order now the meeting and proceed with our roll call, after which we will ask for an excusal for Councilmember Ball and the mayor. Councilmember Van Orman.
Here.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Cargill's here. Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Present.
All right, the mayor is not feeling well and Councilmember Ball is out, so if we can get a motion to excuse both, that'd be great.
Move to excuse Mayor Kaminsky and Councilmember Ball.
Sir.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Dunn, second by Councilmember Van Orman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, pass the six zero. Thank you very much. We are now up to agenda approval. Get a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Spencer and second by Councilmember Kurtz. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Pass the six zero. Thank you. We are up to citizen comments now. For those of you in person, if you haven't already done so and you would like to speak, please fill out one of the sheets here that are in in chambers on the table over there. For those of you online, we will get to your comments as soon as we're done with those in person. Three minutes, please tell us if you live in the city, if you're a city resident, what you're speaking about, if there's a specific topic and we will again say that it's three minutes and we'll start with David Clay.
Good evening. My name is David Clay. I'm a resident of Liberty Lake. Excuse my appearance. I literally just got off the road from Wyoming, from Gillette, Wyoming. I've been on the road for a month today, 7,200 miles. And when I got back in town, I called one of my neighbors just to see how things are going. And I was informed that last week, the city council, several members here on the board, not going to say who they are, you know who you are, apparently approved the library fund approved not to inform the residents of the cost of the library and the path ahead. That disturbed me so much. As soon as I got home, I literally just came here. So you know, the state is raising the taxes for everyone. We have the highest tax increase in the state's history right now. Everything's going up. People like me live on a budget. If we're going to have to pay for a library, in my opinion, I think a library is a great idea. I think a community center is a great idea. But what you have to tell the residents like me, how it's going to be paid for and you have to ask them, are you willing to pay more in property tax to have a new library when we already have one? And if that library isn't sufficient, Spokane Valley right down the road has a library that's twice the size. We're already still paying for the trailhead. I don't go into debt for my household budget. I really hope you as a city council aren't going to go into debt for a library when we have one while we're still paying for the trailhead. I understand that there are donations, there are things like that. But if you're going to ask the residents pay more in taxes, you need to ask them specifically, are you wanting a new library at the expense of paying more property tax? I'm going to tell you, right now I'm not. I have five grandkids. I bring to the library all the time, but not at the expense of raising my property tax that will set me back and probably put me in a hole. So I asked you to reconsider that. If you're going to go forward with this, you need to ask every resident what they want to do. And if need be, I have my entire cul-de-sac neighbors are willing to go door to door with a survey and ask every resident in Liberty Lake. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. Shelley Smith.
Hi, Shelley Smith, 23 year resident of the city of Liberty Lake. Um, I'd like to start and pick up where Mr. Cargill left off at the last meeting. He said he would love to get feedback from some 3,600 plus voters on this advisory vote for the library slash community center. Well, in 2023, 3,712 residents voted between Linda Ball and Phil Follier. Councilwoman Ball won handily with 2,161 votes to Mr. Follier's 1,540 votes. Linda knocked on about every door in this city and campaigned on the library issues. The people voted for a council member that represented their values. So based on what Mr. Cargill said at the last meeting, he would love that volume of feedback, but he and his block of four on the council only listen when the vote reflects their agenda. What did these four do? Well, they worked with Mr. Follier to take power from the library board with a veto proof vote. While Phil was a lame duck, all the while knowing that the citizens intent of voting for Linda, knowing what that meant, knowing what the citizens voted for. So I don't, don't believe him when he says he wants that feedback. What he wants is a rushed advisory vote that will confuse and scare voters into voting no. What he wants is to try to kill the project before he leaves office because he's not sure his buddy Phil will get elected to continue his agenda. So on the record, let me just say that you could still choose to change direction on this. It's just an advisory vote. The last speaker is evidence that there's a bunch of misinformation in this community and on social media. Because of course, no one has voted here at the last meeting not to tell citizens about the cost of the project. We don't know the cost of the project. So as a member of the community, I can see there's going to be an advisor vote. I already can see that writing on the wall because we know that. So let's, um, let's make sure we have good nonpartisan language that's factual. We don't know the cost. We don't know that taxes will be raised. There's a whole lot of stuff we don't know. In fact, we don't know anything. It's not time for an advisory vote. Let's also pick capable members of the community with real knowledge of the library and the community center project who will be on the pro and con committees. So I hope that you will work together to get this advisory vote language the best it can be given the rest job. And please, please, to those who are running social media pages, stop propagating false information spread by non-city residents on social media. Stop the fear mongering. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gerard, Kim Gerard.
My name's Kim Gerard and I'm a resident of Liberty Lake. During the last few meetings, we've heard repeated over and over again that the legacy church building was too small and that library advocates would only end up complaining again in the near future that it would just be too small. Just because you say something over and over again, doesn't make it true. When the city first purchased the legacy church building to remodel it as a library, we knew that it was smaller than what the recommended 2019 consultant's report said, but we were nonetheless grateful and eagerly set about to make it work. People who work in service industries are grateful for everything that they get and they figure out how to best deal with whatever circumstances they are given. As I advocate for the library in our community, people are surprised to hear that the library is no longer going in the legacy church building. While we all agree that we need new city hall offices and that the police force needs more room, that change comes with a higher price tag than if we had just simply renovated that building for the library. I believe that all of the improvements need to be done with our city build out in mind. I'm thankful we have a city staff with a vision and an eye on the future. The past few months have once again highlighted the need for a regular local community news source. The vast amount of misinformation and malinformation about the library on a local community social media page administered by two of the council members does not best serve our community. Some of the most toxic voices on that page can't even vote on our city issues. Ironic that in the information age, we are so clouded by misinformation. I would once again urge you as a council to delay your advisory vote until 2026 so that residents can be educated on the needs of our library as it serves our citizens and our families in particular. The library had almost 70,000 visitors last year. That's an amazing testament to how patrons and families value it. Please visit libertylakelibrarybuild.com to learn about how important our library is to this community and to learn about why we need to update it for our growing population. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad Hamlet.
Brad Hamlet, I am a citizen of the city. I'm here again because I think it's worth repeating that this is unnecessary. I truly believe that, even though I've heard from council members that they are interested, I use that word somewhat with reservation, interested in the people and how they feel about the vote. I'm not so sure about that. What I'm sure about is that you want to add more confusion to the situation because it's been confusing from the very beginning. People have already said we wanted to, we worked on getting a library building to expand into. Then it was the great idea of the the council of four to change that and change it into a beautiful building, which I agree with would be fantastic. A beautiful building with a, with a a community center attached and a part of the, the town hall or the town center, which should be a vision for our city, a vision for everyone in our city. But the bottom line is you cannot, and this gentleman is a perfect example, you cannot give us the information he's asking for. You don't have that information. And how you can sit up there and say you do because you've got some, some schematics last about three weeks ago that said 12 to 15 million, that kind of stuff. You can't go to the voters and say, this is how much it's going to cost you on your taxes. You can't put that on here. You don't have that information. Why would you put out false information purposefully to our citizens? And that's what you're doing. You're putting it out to our citizens. They are not going to get the accurate information to make a good decision. I looked up an advisory vote for the Spokane one thing that Spokane did. Their vote was simple. Do you, they wanted to know where to locate it. Do you want to locate it where it's currently at? Or do you want to locate it at downtown? That was their advisory vote. Pretty simple. No money attached to it, no taxes attached to it. They got their advisory vote. I'm asking you, if you're going to word the information to do it the same thing, just ask our, our, our community. Do you want a library and gathering space or do you not? Pure and simple, but I hear from you, you want to add money to the whole thing. You can't do that in good faith. And I will say that loud and clear, and I hope people tune into this because you cannot do that.
Thank you, Mr. Hamlet. Any comments online? Anybody else in chambers wish to testify? All right. Thank you all very much. We will have another opportunity for citizen comments at the end of the meeting.
Mayor Protema.
Yes, I'm sorry, Rochelle.
We had one written comment from Lynn Atkins. The comment regarded methodology that will be used in committee selection.
Thank you. All right, we are now up to workshop discussions, advisory vote for the library community center project. Mark, how do we want to start this?
So I think it's best to turn it over to the city attorney to clean up any discussion that may still be out there with respect to the question and then we can move on to the other items on the agenda. And so Sean, with that, if you have any follow-up that needs to happen, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Mark. So I think everyone's seen the resolution with regard to the valid title and the question that's been put forth that's in tonight's resolution. You know, the question is similar to what was provided for at the last meeting, doesn't include any dollar figures. It just includes the pursuit of funding or construction and whether that's a yes or no for the citizens to vote. Keep in mind that the ballot title is only a 10-word limit. There's the enacting legislation part, which is the first part of the title and then the secondary part is the question or secondary part is the 10-word limit. So that's what you see in the first paragraph of the ballot proposition and then followed by the question. As it will be seen on the ballot, from a formal, practical side, you will see the ballot title, then the explanatory statement, and then the question. That's how it unfolds. And so from that perspective, that's what you see right here with regard to the title and question. And then I sent everyone my proposed explanatory statement that I was intending to provide to the elections office. So with that, I'll just leave it. Any questions anybody has?
Okay, questions, comments? Who wants to start? Anybody? Councilmember Van Orman?
As I sent in a whole bunch, I understand that you only had 75 words to go ahead and write this. And it basically hit everything but one, and that was a dollar figure that we're, we don't know at this particular point what it would be.
Right.
So I don't see that I would do any changes on it.
Thank you, Councilmember Van Orman. Any other comments? One once. One question I did have, Sean, is if, if we wanted to add a dollar range, is there anywhere that that would specifically be appropriate? Whether it be in the explanatory stage question or the intro?
I think it's difficult to put it anywhere, given that there hasn't been any decision making. The explanatory statement is intended to provide what the impacts would be as well as what the measure would do. And so I did not include it because I don't think anything had been decided on that. I don't know that, I don't think it's possible at all in the ballot title. I don't think you can put where it's 10-word limited as it is.
Yeah, yeah.
So I don't think that's impossible. Is it possible within the explanatory statement? I suppose it's possible. I don't think it's appropriate, given the word limit and what was, what's being trying, what's, what I tried to do within that statement. Especially in light of the fact that there's been no decisions on a dollar figure. There's been no decisions on any funding of any kind. Those discussions were likely to be had in the future. And certainly if there was any bond measure that would be put forth to the voters, that would be specific as to dollar figures in the future. So you would have that as well. So is it possible? Yes. But I'm not saying, given what I provided in the explanatory statement, what's, with what you would have to remove in order to include it.
Okay. Councilmember Kennedy?
More comments than question on it. Yeah, I had mixed emotions when thinking about should we have the dollar amount? Should we not? Things I sort of there. I know a lot of discussions come up saying, well, we don't know what the dollar amount is. But in reality, we do know what the dollar amount is. Because it's based on, we paid a company to give proposals on what it could look like and what the cost would be down to the point of what the square footage cost for square footage. We have examples in the valley of two years ago when that library was built for 500 and some odd dollars a square foot. For over a year now, we have documentation where we have worked time and time again on if we're going to do something at the church building. We had ideas of drawings, what it would be. We had dollar amounts and we knew exactly within range what the square footage was going to be. The same information that we were given and we spent time to gather for that building. We spent time and effort with the same company to give us ideas of the square footages that we would have and what the cost would be. So I find it interesting when I keep hearing is that, well, we don't, we don't know what it's going to cost. Yes, we do. We have a range what's going to cost. An example I give you is that many things the city has done, trailhead being a good example. We spent years trying to figure out what we're going to do with trailhead. We, we analyzed it. We spent tons and thousands and thousands of dollars to see what it really needed. And the council spent a lot of good time and a lot of extra meetings to figure out what that cost was going to be. And the cost came up to, I think it was 6.1 or 6.2 million dollars with overages. And it was voted on the council that that was the price and not a nickel more. I believe to date, Kyle can check on this, I think we're over $8 million over that figure. So there was a situation there where it didn't go to the voters, other than the council was able to say, we're going, we have the, we're going to create this debt. But the big thing was, we needed to know what the cost was going to be, exactly what was going to be. And we decided that that's what we're going to be, what this was going to look like, and this is the cost. We ran over that two weeks from that. We started going over that budget. We are now. So in reality is to study, people come up and say, we have to know exactly what it's going to be. Doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtz.
Point of information, I heard, just heard Councilmember Kennedy say we were $8 million over on the trailhead expenses and I don't know that that's accurate.
That's why I made her inject. That's why I said you probably check that Kyle would have the numbers that for what we were approved and started on where we are with trailhead is I understand substantially more than what was initially approved.
And so our, um, sorry, our, uh, our GMP was 7.3. So we did a progressive design bill on that. And so our, our amount was 7.295 million for a trial.
And where were it to date, do you know approximately?
It'd be, it was, it came in right under that. So they're, they're legally not allowed to exceed that amount, that GMP. So we, we had the discussion with like poles and netting and range updates and stuff like that. That was, that was a separate cost. And I think that was about 800,000. So.
I want to point out is that the, the netting and the cost was in the 6.2.
Okay.
This council. That was very detailed. If we want to go into the, check the records, I'm sure the records will show that. That was a combined thing we're going to do there. Now, I don't want to get too lost in the weeds there. But the point is, we tend to do things and we do our best, come up with what it's going to look like and what the costs are going to be. Now, if we hit it, great. If we don't hit it, it's still an asset of the city and we move forward in no circumstances where we suddenly had any situation where you say, this is over budget, so we're going to stop. So to say that we can't move forward on advisory vote, which to me, I'm more comfortable with an advisory vote right now than giving the citizens a choice that yes, they're going to do this or not. What I have seen is a lot of time and effort well spent to get the citizens to give us their comments. We spent a lot of time and effort by people in the audience, council and a lot of other individuals to try to get the comments of the citizens. And that gave us enough information to be able to move forward. But until we get that information also to the citizens, I think we're spinning our wheels, whereas the advisory vote is simply saying, this is what we have an interest. When 2016, 2017, I think it was such a small percentage that it didn't pass. But what the message was very clear that yes, the citizens wanted it. A huge amount still wanted to move ahead with it. So to me, an advisory vote is more exciting to me, to be able for the citizens to say, what if it comes in that 51% or 49% says yes? Me as a council member to look at that and say, hold it, there's a strong interest here, the citizens that are interested in this. And that gives the ability for the future council and committees to be able to move forward, say, and hold it. We have a huge amount. Right now, we have individuals who say majority, everybody wants this. We have no hard facts. We have no hard facts. An advisory vote will give us hard facts. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtz.
I think Councilmember Kennedy, when we're talking about trailhead, our original budget, we talked about 10 million and then we talked about 8 million and then COVID happened and we had to adjust. So I think that's my hesitation with putting a dollar figure out there where at some point we're going to have to adjust. At the last meeting, our city attorney said that the council can change direction at any time. And I think that that's what I want to hold open is because as we're thinking about the library and amongst the city hall project and all of the other projects and the master facilities plan and all the other things that we've been given information on that we need to fund, this may not be the ultimate solution. And so I think that we do need to be able to have the full range of figures if we were going to present something to the community. And that's why I don't think that the number should be in there because again, we literally don't have factual numbers. We have guesses at this point, pretty educated guesses. But there's a lot of change coming in forth with tariffs and things like that, which will affect building costs. And so I don't want to go out there and say it's going to be a $12 million project and suddenly it's an $18 million project because the costs went up. So I do want to hold the option open of the ability to consider legacy church, which we could have paid for in cash without any discussion for anybody. The other thing that I want to point out is that our code of ethics makes it clear that any false statement or representation of any public record or document in a will for disregard of the truth of such statement or representation is against our code of ethics. We have a code of ethics and an oath to give out factual information. And saying that it's going to be $13 million is not factual because we've not voted on it. So I think that it's very important that as we are moving forward, what we put in the voter's guide is neutral and doesn't prejudice voters, doesn't sway voters one way or the other, and that we let the voters decide with the information that they have, which is the information we have, which doesn't include a hard cost. I think the other thing that we need to be talking about tonight before we leave is what our agreed upon facts are, because there are different facts that are going on in the community. Whether they're official or not, I think that the city staff should provide us with facts that the city council members, when they're asked about it, can provide facts as we're moving forward. So that my perception of something that's factual, which is probably different than perhaps Councilmember Van Orman's representing the same facts. I don't want to get into emotions. And so I think that it's important that we do go forward with facts. And we don't have facts to put in the advisory vote for the, the language yet. We haven't made those decisions. And I think it would be inadvisable for our council to put forward something that we know is not accurate and that goes against the advice of our legal counsel.
Councilmember Dunn.
Hey, a question clarification that was made in the last meeting. Mark, is the city in receipt of a quote for a project?
Not a quote, no.
Can we issue a purchase order on what the city has in its hands right now?
That would not be advisable, no.
Has this council voted on a project including any detail of a cost of this project?
Not a specific scope, no.
So in point of fact, there is no material cost to this project at this moment. And in my opinion, to put such in writing in any form, sounds like it compromises our ethics policy. So, thanks.
I'm going to see if Councilmember Spencer wants to jump in here first and then we'll go around for round two. No, okay. Mark, just a quick follow-up question to Councilmember Dunn's point. When we hold the open house later this week and any open house related to this, are we showing the plans and showing the cost of each plan?
We are showing, yes. So what you see in, in the printout in large part is what will be displayed at the open house, what was displayed at Barefoot and what's planned to be displayed at future engagements, farmer's market and others. But yes.
And the costs are on there?
Yes.
So I guess what I'm trying to square here is the difference between us as a city going out and saying, here are the three library options that we have and the cost is going to be 12 million, 13.5 and 14 point whatever. I can't remember the, the three numbers.
15, 6.
Thank you. 15, 6. And that information being available for citizens on the ballot as well. And if we're going to say we shouldn't put it on the ballot, my opinion is we should be taking it off of those documents as well. Because we're basically doing the same thing. We're going out to citizens and saying, here are the three options we're considering. Here are the three costs we're considering and it's 12 to 15 and a half million dollars. Those are just my thoughts. We can do round two now if we have anybody who would like to jump in. Councilmember Kennedy?
I'm going to reiterate something what I said earlier, so I can get on to the second point. I'm going to reiterate something what I said earlier, so I can get on to the second point, is that. Once again, we spent tremendous amount of time and effort working with the citizens and stuff and saying, here's the options of what church building can look like. Here's the different floor plans, and here's the dollar amount we think it's going to be, that dollar amount kept changing every time it was there. At no time did we say we're not going to move ahead with it, we kept saying, okay, then we would move for there. Thing I find interesting is that to be thrown out, we can't move ahead because of being unethical. Well, let's not get in the weeds of something like that, but let's go back to this last year when we were going to approve our budget. For this coming year, and what was included in there was a million dollar grant that we didn't have. We were on the list to possibly qualify for it, but we didn't have it, but yet it was put in the budget that we did have it. The other thing was, there was a five hundred thousand dollar, dollar amount that was put in there as donations, of which we didn't have a nickel of that. We had no letter of a commitment, we had no promise, we had nothing. And that there was one point five million dollars of the budget to build the library at the church building. So that had to be eliminated because in due process of accounting, you can't do that. And yet how the citizens chose to look at is that this council robbed them of one point five million dollars. How could you take one point five million dollars that you never had? So to suddenly jump on this aspect of being unethical, I think it's a stretch.
Councilmember Spencer.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just add to that, I, I think we're just talking semantics, the, the way you worded. Uh, I mean, you can simply say that they're considered, that the city council is considering a project within X and Y range. And that's the information that we have now, that's, there's nothing unethical about that, we've all been presented with that information, it's, it's available to the citizens. So there's nothing unethical about providing the information that we do have, which is something that we all have access to.
Any other comments?
What I basically sent to the attorney was everything that would be. Trying to educate the, the population, why are we doing this? We're trying to advise the city council during budget process for financing options. Uh, to gather information from the public for the facility size and the need for community centers through upcoming workshops. Filled the needs for senior center and youth programs identified within our capital facility plans, we already have that. The financing will be a mixture of sinking funds, grants, donation and a possible tax increase, looks like he nailed that one. Uh, to increase the library space for future growth as identified in the December two thousand nineteen facility assessment. And then you add on to that one, and that would have taken up your whole seventy five words, so. Understood, um. Not sure in that wording where you would put, uh, not to exceed fifteen million. That would be my wording. Um, but it may not be others here in the council. I, I think my biggest thing for putting this on the ballot. Is to hear from the residents of what they want, give them a heads up. And throughout this whole process, we've got both this budget season and next budget season for us to start putting sinking funds away. So we can really do this project right.
Councilmember Curtis or Councilmember Dunn? Sean?
Some of the, um, aspects that Councilmember Van Norman just mentioned were some of the same ones that I had in, um, what I proposed as well. Because I think part of, um, the statement for me was about what we're wanting to offer the community, what our thoughts are. Um, versus about it being just about the cost, we can figure out the cost. And if we have to go for a tax to achieve it, they're going to tell us whether they want that or not. Um, but I think I would like to know whether they want this project. Um, and then we can figure out how it fits in with everything else. Um, but it feels like it's more about projecting cost, which isn't, which is important. Um, but it's, it's, it's what confuses the issue and makes it more complicated to ask any yes or no question. Um, I do think that there are still some people who are not interested in the community center but are interested in a library, I think there's people who are interested in a community center and not a library. Um, and I think having all of those options available to us is important, but I think that. When you start talking about costs and people think that it's a tax, when it is not a tax, that's where the confusion comes in. And we have not made any decisions, we have not decided to go forward with any of the project designs, they're simply ideas. Um, that have some maybe costs associated with them, if we were to put fifteen million dollars on there and the project comes back at sixteen million dollars, what do we do then? Um, the voters have told us to do something, and I do have questions about the way that this is worded. And I have questions about whether the council will actually honor the public's, um, vote when it comes time to do the, to do our budgeting. We're going to be right in the middle of budgeting season, near the end of budgeting season before this is even, um, certified. And I hope that there will be, you know, some distinction, that it won't be within like five votes that we have to wait until the end of November for, but. Um, I think that it is going to impact our budgeting season as well. Um, and I'm, I'm just curious about whether we'll honor, um, what the citizens have said, because we haven't honored that so far. We continue to ask for feedback, we've spent, last time we talked, uh, last time I got a number anyway, over five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Evaluating whether we want a library or not. Um, and we still don't have a library.
Councilmember Dunn? No, Sean, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, um, so, let, let me kind of back up here a little bit, um, with regard to the statement and, and the comments that are made. A, a big part of this is that, you know, the urgency of which this is coming and the timing of being able to, you know. Present all options or, or what may be possible with, with a library and community center, the three options that have been proposed previously. Nothing precludes the city from giving factual information and that, you know, these are options that are being considered. Um, by, by the city, by the council, um, that's what the opening statement, um, or the opening sentence provides. You know, you're considering the construction of a new community center and library, these are the options. Um, these are the dollar figures associated with, that's factual information that the council is considering, that's exactly what the first sentence says. My job and my statutory obligation is to write it in a way that is neutral. That's it, neutral, not one side or the other, and while I haven't researched it, I suspect if you re- researched the legislative history on this statute. It's going to tell you something along the lines is, we want the city attorney or prosecuting attorney to write this, because we don't want council members. Having a bias towards one side or the other. Again, that's my speculation at this point without having read it, because the intent is to say in neutral terms. What will the ballot measure do? And what is, what are its impacts? We don't know that answer, and keep in mind, we have information, but we don't know specifically, and this is not a binding decision. Um, it's an advisory one, where the council takes the information and decides what it wants to do with it. Um, it's not bound by it, it could follow it, it could not follow it. But in writing something in neutral terms, I don't disagree that there's options, I don't disagree that there are, um, monetary figures associated with those options. But there haven't been any decisions made, and this advisory vote is not about selecting one option or the other. Um, it's about determining funding for it and determining the construction of it. That's the question that's being asked of the citizens and whether they want it or not, not to pick an option. And if you're inserting a dollar figure, in my opinion, that hasn't been ultimately decided, and I'm not saying tonight vote on one of them, that's not going to change my opinion. What I think is, it's creating a specific impact or decision. Of this vote tied to those options where there's no final decision being, having been made. So again, the, the council and staff are certainly able to provide that factual information to the citizens. To, for their consideration prior to the advisory vote, and potentially prior to any bond measure vote that may happen in twenty twenty six. Um, so, um, I, I don't want to get away from what my obligation is. As the city attorney and my statutory requirements to write something in a neutral fashion. Um, when there hasn't been decisions made specifically and what the impact would be as a result of this vote. And so that's why the statement, as you see it, and I provide it to everyone, has been written in the way that it's been written.
Sean, can I ask you a quick follow up of that?
Sure.
Um, is the, um. Is what you just said, um, specific to an exact dollar amount or a, a range as well? In other words, if we, if, if it were to say a range versus, you know, just fifteen million.
I think that.
It's the same thing.
Wouldn't change my opinion, I think it's still the same.
All right, thank you. Other questions, thoughts, comments? All right, hearing, uh, none, uh, Sean, just for the sake of the public. Uh, could we read the explanatory statement out?
Sure, I'm happy to read it.
Okay, so that they know what is in it as well?
Sure, uh, the city count, city council is considering the construction of a new community center and library near Town Square Park, Signal and Mission. And the city of, city of Liberty Lake, and seeks citizen input concerning such funding and construction. Funding options may include grants, donations, a future property tax bond measure, and or other city general fund revenues. The proposition will advise the city council whether there is citizen support to pursue the various funding options and construction.
Okay, any comments or thoughts on that? Okay, and just so everyone is aware, in addition to the, um, explanatory statement, the ballot measure would say, um, as a title. Uh, the Liberty Lake City Council is calling for an advisory election to consider whether to fund and construction. Fund and construct a new community center and library in the city of Liberty Lake. And the question as it's presented right now is, should the city pursue the funding and construction? Of a new community center and library in the city of Liberty Lake, yes or no? Any, yes, Councilmember Spencer?
Just to clarify, where, where does this explanatory statement show up, and it was my understanding that that would, that would be above the question. If, if, that's how it'll appear in the, in the, um, the ballot.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
I have one, uh, comment or question, uh, Sean. Would, in that last sentence, or the question, I should say, would there be any difficulty with? Changing the word pursue to prioritize?
I think that changes the dynamic of the question if you use prioritize. Because it's about funding, whether you're trying to decide what funding options, as opposed to prioritizing options. And potentially would create some confusion, in my opinion.
Okay. Any other, yes, Councilmember Kurtz?
And I wouldn't be in support of doing prioritize, because I think that we prioritize how we fund things based on information that we have. Um, and there's a number of other product, projects that we have that we need to consider when prioritizing this, this project and amongst everything. Um, so I would prefer pursue, um, because it doesn't mean that there's a final decision that's being made.
Yes, Councilmember Spencer.
Um, Sean, um, i- if you swapped out the word prioritize, uh. In both the explanatory statement and the question, then, then that would, that would be kosher, wouldn't it? From a, from a standpoint of keep, keeping those two, two elements talking about the same thing.
Are you talking about what he, Chris says about switching out those words?
Well, uh, I think he was talking specifically about the explanatory statement, and you said that that would change the meaning of the question. But if you changed the word pursue in the explanatory statement and in the question, then it seems like. Both of them would be, uh, addressing whether we should prioritize the funding and construction of a new community center and library. Rather than just simply pursuing it.
I, I, I think if you change it in either one, whether that's the statement or the question, it changes the dynamic of the question and goes from. Whether the council or the city pursues funding options or prioritizing, and I think it creates confusion because you don't know what that priority is. So it's just a question of whether the citizens believe they should pursue funding options for a new community center, if you say prioritize funding options. We don't know what those funding options are, we have no idea, right, the citizens would have no idea what those funding options are at this point. Um, so that's why, I mean, if you had a different explanatory statement that said, here's option one at twelve million, here's option two at thirteen million. Here's option three at fifteen million, then I would probably agree with you. But in the context of, that's not where we are in relation to what's being asked, I, I think that changes the, the, the question. And what is overall being asked about whether the citizens want the council to find funding options. And or construct, um, a new community center and library.
Okay, no, I, I do see what you're saying, uh, because you have the, the phrase, various funding options. Uh, where, where the question itself just says pursue the funding and construction. So i- in theory, if you change the word pursue in both cases to prioritize. Um, and then, and then rather than saying various funding options, just simply funding and, uh, the funding and construction. Uh, to match the question as it's, as it stands on this document here, then, then they would be talking about the same thing, it sounds like. But I do see what you're saying by, by saying funding options in one case and only funding in the other, that those wouldn't, those wouldn't work together.
Yes, right, um, I, I think the other thing to keep in mind too is when you see it on the ballot. You'll have the, the title upfront, and then you'll have the explanatory statement that will show what those funding options are. And so then to pursue the funding, which could be anything, could be any one of them or all of them, quite frankly, right? So you'll be able to see that in the context of the entire ballot of what funding options may look like. So when you're talking about funding and construction, when you get to the question, you'll know that those various options, whether it's grants, donations, bond measure. Other general revenues of the city, you'll be able to see that and know that those are the options.
Additional questions? Yes.
Well, just to, uh, on that, on that same topic, rather than changing the word pursue in the explanatory sa- statement. You could reasonably change the word pursue in the question, because I think the essence of the explanatory statement is. Uh, we are seeking input concerning funding and construction of a new community center and library. So if the question were to say, should the city, uh, prioritize the funding and construction of a new community center and library in the city of Liberty Lake? I don't think that takes away from what we've stated in the explanatory statement, from a question standpoint.
Councilmember Kurtz.
My only comment is that we make those decisions during the budgeting process and the comprehensive plan and the capital facilities plan and all of that. Um, that process naturally, um, based on information, I think that this. Advisory vote is going to tell us whether we do need to prioritize funding and how we need to do that based on the outcome of the vote. Um, so I feel like pursue is the appropriate way to say that, because we don't know if we are going to prioritize it or not. Uh, until we deliberate after the vote.
I'll just, uh, anybody else want to jump in here, yes, Councilmember Spencer?
Well, I, I, I guess that's, that's what I'm trying to say is, aren't we asking the citizens if they want us to pri- to prioritize that? I know years ago, uh, when I was first, uh, put on the council, um, Lisa sent out a matrix. Uh, when we looked at the capital facilities plan and we looked at all the different various projects. And the assignment for us was to go through each of those projects and prioritize which one, and, and, uh. If I'm not mistaken, she stopped doing that because the council wasn't filling it out, I was, I was one of the only ones who actually filled it out. So, um, I think what I'm trying to say is, if we send this out, we really are seeking to know whether the citizens. Want us to prioritize this project or not. That, that they want us to put it, because i- in the last meeting, I, I brought up the fact that, hey. For some reason, this got put at the front of the line, well, yeah, it was, it was on, uh, it was on a capital facilities plan. But I, I don't ever recall ranking any of those projects in a, in a specific order. Um, so, so I think, I think it would be useful to know whether the citizens, whether it's a priority to the citizens that we move forward on this. Um, and again, uh, I, I think that's just what you said just now, is that we want to know what their priority is.
Councilmember Dunn?
Uh, in point of verb mechanics, the word prioritize infers the choice or the reference of more than one item. To be clear, this advisory vote is about one item. The word pursue, do you want it or not? The word prioritize infers, here's some different things, which is before the other. So I think the utility of the word pursue is resolute.
And I'll just jump in and say, the reason why I asked prioritize is because. And I'll just jump in and say, the reason why I ask prioritize is because we have about four or five major projects that we are discussing right now in the city. We're talking about like the Legacy Church Building, turn that into City Hall, the reconstruction that's going to happen, have to happen here. The Trailhead Bond Payoff, the possibility of a town square option for the library and community center. And so when I, when I'm thinking about this, I'm thinking, I'd like to have the citizens tell us what is most important. I don't know that prioritize is the most, is the best word. But I do think it's important to keep that in mind as we're discussing this title. And I'll just go back to, I know we kind of left the, the cost question on the side for a second, but as council member Kennedy, I believe, pointed out, and I asked Kyle for these numbers today, we spent a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars on concepts and cost estimates for the town square project. And I understand what, what Sean is saying about his statutory obligations, but I think it's strange to me that we're going out to the public at open houses and telling them that, that the cost is going to be twelve to fifteen point five million dollars, but we're not willing to say that on a, on a ballot measure. When we're asking them the same question and asking them to, to, to chime in on that. So I appreciate all the language that's in here, and I think Sean did a great job of capturing everyone's thoughts. My only question is on that, on that cost part. Councilmember Kurtz.
Councilmember Spencer, Mayor Protem, we talked about prioritizing, and I think that if we were looking at having the public rank all of those things, do you want City Hall, do you want Trailhead payoff, do you want those things? Giving them the option to actually give us input on what they want to prioritize would be one thing, and it would be several advisory votes. But I think that we, we, if we're not giving them all the options of what to prioritize, we're, we're essentially saying that we would prioritize this above everything else, and that's misleading. Because again, I've said that we need to consider all of those pieces together before we make a decision on how we would consider funding this, because all of those other pieces, all, it's all a puzzle and it all intersects together. And I don't think that, I don't think this council in particular would prioritize funding of the library over City Hall or over something else. So I think it gives them a false sense of their ability to say, I want you to prioritize this, when that's probably not going to be the way the council votes. So I think pursue, we're going to look at it all, is a more general and neutral way to say that we're looking at a library. We want your blessing essentially, or your input on whether you want us to go forward or not. It seems more neutral than the prioritization piece.
Yes, council member Kennedy.
Listen to the discussion, reading this, I'm completely satisfied using the word pursue. Because I think it gets too complicated beyond that. And also, I do believe if we suddenly get into the weeds again of trying to ask the citizen at this point prioritizing things, this is not going to happen. We're not getting a new library. We're not getting a community center. It's going to die. Just like it has in the past when too many things are given to the citizens to make a decision on. When we've had in the past where it was to build the City Hall and the library, it was pretty simple. Then another item got thrown into it, and I think it starts splitting the citizens. I'm very comfortable with the way that the attorney has written this up to utilize the word pursue, because that's the only thing I'm interested in, is asking the citizen, is this something you have an interest in? Because I'm a firm believer, as I sit here today, that even with the change of any type of the council this next year, if we got a forty-some percent, yes, and sixty-seven percent, no, still shows enough interest for the citizens that, yes, they're interested in the community center. The idea of trying to push a library without a community center, I believe, will fail one hundred percent. Because the argument comes down to, we already have it, why do we need anyone? Well, the argument comes down to, because we need more room. So that is a community center. We have a library, but we don't have a community center. When we looked at Trailhead, the big push there was that we already had the golf course, but we needed what? A community center. And that was a big part of the push for the vote that didn't materialize. We need a community center. Makes sense to bring it in with the library. Let's don't make this, let's don't make it too complicated.
Councilmember Van Oran.
And to weigh in. I think it's going to be very important for us to have the same wording all the way around. So when we're talking about library, not library flex center or flex space, it's librarian community center. If you want to see something take off and get everybody behind it, it's utilizing the same language all the way through. I, I agree. I think that what we've got here is, is good. I, the only other thing that I would have put in is not to exceed, but we don't know what the public's going to say. Maybe during all these workshops, they're going to say, hey, we want something a little bit bigger. And in that case, we go with the flow and it's up to us as a council to decide how that's going to be funded.
So a comment was made earlier about if this goes to a votes and the citizens express support, that the council should take note of that, and I agree with that one hundred percent. But if this also goes to a vote and the citizens don't express support, I think we also should take note of that. You know, it's not a one-way street here, and I, part of the whole reason I wanted to put this to voters since the beginning of the year is so that they have a chance to chime in and let us know what they're, what they're thinking. So I would just, this is good information, I think, to have going into the budget season, and hopefully on November fifth, or whatever the day is, the day after the election, we will know what citizens are, are saying. And if they're saying yes, then I think it's important, as we prioritize the budget for next year, that we put more money into that particular fund. And if they're saying no, then I think it's important to reallocate what we've already done, because we've already spent a ton on, on the proposals for this, as I mentioned, one sixty-seven on the, on the town square. And then I also checked with Kyle, fifty-three thousand is what we spent coming up with concepts for the Legacy Church Building as well. So in total, just coming up with concepts and costs, we've spent about two hundred thousand dollars on these two facilities, or these two possible locations for the new library and community center. Yes, councilmember Kurtz.
So Mayor Protem, I agree with you about hearing from the people, and I think my point is that I am concerned again about the ability of this council to main focused on facts and for us to have the same message. So while I want the citizens to vote, I want them to vote without influence from things that are not accurate or misleading. And I think that's my biggest hesitation, is that there will be a campaign out there against it. And I'm sure there will be a campaign for it as well. But I don't want this body, the individuals and the collective of this body, to be out there influencing the vote. I think it should be the citizens. They read what they read, they get their news wherever they get their news, and we don't influence that in any way, passively or actively.
Well, I think we've moved the conversation, because as we've talked about at the last meeting, there was disagreement about whether to put this to a vote several times. And so I'm, I'm glad that we're at least moving forward with the option to let citizens have a say in this. Any other comments? Okay, so we're moving on in the agenda to general business, action items, the appointment of members to the for and against committee. And so you all have the list in front of you of those who have chimed in and would like to speak on either side. Rochelle, do you want to take this?
Yes, thank you, Evan. So as he's pulling up the presentation.
Is your mic on?
I believe so. Yes. Can you hear me better? Okay, I actually don't have that. Let me get, thank you, Evan. You make that just a little bit bigger. Okay, perfect. So this is very similar to the presentation that you received from Kyle Dixon at our last special meeting. This is, for the purposes of this, we will call it a for and against committee, rather than a pro and a con committee, just to be consistent with the elections office. The legislative body for each ballot measure must appoint two committees no later than the resolution, resolution filing deadline. Each committee will have three citizens residing in the jurisdiction to prepare arguments favor and against. Next slide, please. Okay, so following the July thirtieth special meeting, there was discussion about having residents of the city to be on the for and against committee. So community engagement began. Our communication specialists put out some information to the community and encouraged anybody who would want to be a part of either committee to please email the city clerk. To date, we received six interested applicants to serve in the for committee. And then additionally, we received four applicants to serve in the against committee. Applicants have been provided to council on papers, and one note on this, the number that they are listed is the number in which they were received. So those are all in order. And similar to the auditor's office, that is how they would appoint, not to give council any direction, but that is how they appoint in order received. If the other criteria has been, you know, achieved. Each committee shall consist of not more than three members, as I stated before. However, a committee may seek the advice of other people who might also be interested in it. Next slide, please. So next step, so council to appoint the committee members. The jurisdiction, city clerk is responsible for providing the committee members with the copies of instructions, specifications, deadlines for all their statements. All of that information is laid out, and I'll give that to them. The committees are solely responsible for submitting their statements to the elections division. It, it will be up to them and the instructions will be laid out very clearly. Next slide, please. Sorry, that is very hard to read, and I should have printed it out for you, but the very important one to point out there is August seventh is the deadline for their initial statements. I have reached out to all of the applicants and just made them aware of the deadline. I mean, I think all of them knew it was a little bit of a crunch, but I just really wanted them to be aware of that and take that into consideration. And so they're all aware. Next slide, please.
Rochelle?
Yes.
So it's, it's the for that's August seventh was, did that say August eleventh for the, or is that rebuttal?
Thank you. So August eleventh, thank you, Sean. That is for the rebuttal statement. Yes. So the, the initial statement is two hundred and fifty words, and then the rebuttal is seventy-five. Okay, and then next slide, please. Any questions or comments? And some I may defer to the city attorney or Mark.
Councilmember Kurtz.
When I was reading through the same documents that you had a screenshot of up there, it talked about the for and against committee, to, they need to have, be known to favor or oppose. Was there some sort of way to identify whether they are known to?
Yes, each applicant said whether they were for or against.
Sean, a real quick question here. Other than, can we go back one slide, Evan? Other than the items on here, the statement and the rebuttal, that's basically it for the committees, correct? They don't really do anything else.
As it relates to the elections office, yes, they're just, certainly that they want to campaign on their own, they could do that. But from the standpoint of what's required of the elections office, the statement is what they prepare, two hundred and fifty-word limit, either for or against the vote, the advisory proposition.
Got it. Thank you. Additional questions? Yes, council member Kennedy.
Verification. We're forming a committee against, forming a committee for. The committee against, that they will formulate words of why they are against this going to a vote, correct?
No. Not going to a vote, of why they're against this being approved by citizens. So basically, this is where the voters guide, and in the voters guide, it would say, you know, this committee supports this measure, blah, 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 blah. And then this committee opposes this measure, blah, 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 blah.
But it ties to the vote of the advisory vote.
It's, it's tied to the yes or the no. So the way the question is worded, if you want the city and the council to pursue funding and construction of a new library, you would vote yes. So that would be a for committee. If you don't want the city council, the city to pursue funding and construction, you'd vote no, and that'd be the against.
Okay. I appreciate process. I also got to do it, but sometimes it doesn't seem like it is what it is. I have to smile with this. I have to smile with this. We've gone through a year or more, two years, but we have to move ahead, we have to move ahead, we have to move ahead. This is what the citizens want, this is what the citizens want. And then finally, the council says, okay, let's give it to them, make a decision. Now we get all these people come in and say, we don't have the appropriate information, we're rushing this, and don't give this to the citizens for a vote. And yet we have a committee of individuals who have been consistent saying, don't advance this forward, give this to citizens, and they want to be on the for. Thank you for doing that. Thank you for making that change. And then we have against, of which some of these people we have heard or heard not. I, I, I just have to chuckle how it goes from, we want it, we have to have it. Oh, don't do it, but now it looks like it's going to happen. So now I want to be on the for side. Pick a level, folks. Pick a level.
Additional comments? Okay, so we will take nominations then. And again, just a reminder, it is up to three. It doesn't have to be three, it could be one, it could be two, it could be none. If we do not vote tonight, Sean, correct me if I'm wrong here. If we do not vote and appoint a committee tonight, then it goes to the auditor's office and they do it by a first come, first served basis, correct?
Or, yeah, assuming the individuals are qualified, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Kennedy.
Our question, will it be, how, how this could be handled? Will each council member have the option to make a choice, three choices, their recommendation?
Well, there is any real formal set way to do it. I, I would propose, however, that if you do it individually, for each individual on the committee and make a nomination of that person to the committee in a second, vote on that, rather than doing it as a group, because that creates confusion over, you know, there may be some candidates for the committee that are not electable. I don't know. I'm just saying, I think it's better to do it individually.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out how we can be fair and equitable to everyone, and I'm not sure how we're going to do that.
So why don't we do this? And Sean, jump in if this is wrong. If we can get a, a nomination for one person for the for committee, if there's a second, we'll go to a vote, and we'll see if that person has enough votes. And then we'll go one person for the against committee. Again, if there's a nomination in a second, we'll go to a vote, and then we'll go back and forth until we have no more than three. Is that agreeable to everyone? Yes, councilmember Kennedy.
If that's the case, I would like to start with a.
Before you go, Mike.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, before any motions are made, Mark, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Sean. Mayor Protem, if, if I may, before we move on to nominations and motions, I'd just like to point out, so that we can stay in a position where we are beyond the appearance of any conflict. I just want to point out that number three on the for committee listed here is Catherine Atkins, is a city employee. And so we would recommend that she not be appointed to the for committee.
Okay.
And, and, and let's, let's be clear, as I said at the last meeting, city staff, elected officials can be on the committee. I made the recommendation to avoid any potential appearance of, of issues or fairness or whatnot. It would probably be easier not to have elected officials or city staff on that, but that is. It would probably be easier not to have elected officials or city staff on that, but that is permitted under the statutes.
Okay, one quick follow-up to that, Mark, for Mr. Hamlet, who's on one of this, on the library board of trustees. Or maybe this is a question for Sean, is that the same thing?
It's the same issue, it does not present the same concern because of the level of access.
Okay. Okay. Okay, Councilmember Kennedy.
Just questioning clarification. I always thought you were volunteer. I didn't realize. Pardon?
Then you were mistaken.
Okay. Well, because you were my choice. Because I never won a choice.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Is it up to the individual to decide if they have a conflict of interest?
There is no inherent conflict. We're concerned about the appearance of a conflict.
Anybody else before we go back to Councilmember Van Orman, Councilmember Smith?
I'm just curious whether there's an appetite to go with the first three on each list excluding Ms. Atkins. So, we go to number four on that list, if there's an appetite to do that. And then there is no appearance of conflict of interest because we're just taking the first three from each list.
Yes, Councilmember Kurtz.
I am interested in that, I had one other question as to whether we want to hear from any of these people if they happen to be here tonight. Or is that just too much? I don't want to make it too complicated, but before we get into the actual voting part, I just want to make sure we all know what we expect and what we want to see.
I think, you know, I think the intent from staff was, given the timing of how things have unfolded, was to present it in a fashion that if the council didn't do anything, how would it be handled by the auditor's office? And it would be on a first come, first served, assuming they were qualified to do so. And so, I think that was from the staff's perspective, I don't think there was anything more than that, whether that was conversation or or further information from any of the committee members. When they submitted their interests was just to have an idea of whether the applicants for the committees, the respective committees were either for or against the advisory proposition and that was the extent of it.
Yes, I guess I'm interested, the one, two, three is agreeable with me. With Catherine being moved down because she's a city employee, so it'd be Kim Gerard would be the third.
Could you make that a motion, please?
I would like to make a motion that the for and against committee be on the against committee, Nathan Wehrman, Stephen Anderson, Jared Von Tobel.
Let me stop you right there, let's just do the one, we'll do one for each of them.
Period.
Thank you.
So, the motion, and just I can make sure for Rochelle and everyone, you started with against, right?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion is on approving Nathan Wehrman, Steve Anderson and Jared Von Tobel for the con or against committee. And the second was by, who made a second, Councilmember Dunn. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Okay, passes six zero, we have our against con committee, now the for committee.
I would make a motion that the for committee include Kim Schmidt, Mary Helgason and Kim Gerard.
Okay, second by Councilmember Kennedy, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. All right, passes six zero. All right, so we've got our for and con committees, thank you all very much.
Please use the word for and against.
Thank you, for and against committees. All right, we are now up to resolutions and resolution 25-277, Rochelle.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Resolution 25-277, a resolution of the city of Liberty Lake, providing for the submission to the qualified voters of the city, a non-finding advisory proposition concerning the funding and construction of a new community center and library.
Okay, do we have a motion in a second?
Move, resolution 25-277.
Okay, second by Councilmember Van Orman. We will do public comment first and then council comments, all right. I think we were gonna do.
Council comments.
Unless you all want to do council comments first and then we can go to public discussion, all right? We can go to a public testimony now, again, anybody in chambers or online, you'll have three minutes to give us a public comment on the resolution, please stick to the resolution that is up for debate. Resolution number 25-277, three minutes is the amount that you'll have, is there anyone in chambers who wishes to? Mr. Olson first and then Catherine. Go ahead.
I just want to ask for some clarification. First off, this has been very informing to me, stating earlier, you know, having all the facts, very beneficial, so I appreciate the council taking the time to make this happen and listen to everyone's input. Your input to me has been very valuable. I want to definitely agree with Ms. Kurtz on cost creep, I've spent 41 years working for the government. Who knows better than cost creep than the government? So, I strongly would encourage a cap because that cap will impact, getting back to the objective in the statement where we talked about donations, funds, taxes. When you say taxes to me, or you say, do you need something? I've got a nine-year-old truck, I need a new truck. Or I want a new truck, you know, I want a new truck, but my wife who controls the budget says, well, we can't afford one, so guess what? I'm not getting a truck. So, do we need a library commissioner or do we want one? So, do we have to pay for the trailhead to get our economy and our budget under control? That's a decision for the city council to make on the priorities. But when you ask and put that statement in there, taxes are, that's very vague to me, taxes, there are a lot of different taxes. So, in your ballot, I believe as a voter, you say taxes, is that sales tax going up? What is the tax? I think you need to ask the question to the voters, are you willing for your prop, and I think you mean property taxes are going up? If you say taxes, so that's my point. What are those taxes? That needs to be clear to the voters. Like me, are you willing for your property tax to go up to offset the cost, whatever that cost may be? Are you willing to have an increase in your property tax to pay for the offset of what we cannot raise, donate or the other? Or in the budget, because if the city council is saying to me as a resident, hey, do you want a new library? Sure, I want a new library, you know, when you sent out the three options, did I vote? Sure did. Me, in my mind, don't build a library without a community center because we already have one. Right, so I did vote on that because I think that would be a benefit for the city, but it comes down to, can we afford it? So, just please think about that when you're sending out that ballot. Tell everybody, tell us how we're going to pay for it and are you willing as a property owner to pay more property taxes to pay for it? I think, I think majority of people, whether you get people who want something, sure, I want one. Now, here's what's gonna cost you in property tax, oh, timeout, I'm not willing to do that. So, I think that question needs to be asked, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clay, Catherine.
Good evening, council. So, regarding the for and against committees in regards to my position at the library, I just want to let you know that I understand why the reasoning, what the reasoning was to move me down on the list. Even though I am entitled to have my own opinions as long as it does not impact what I'm doing at the library or interacting with the public while I am at the library. But I am perfectly willing to accept that decision, I want you to be aware of that. The other thing regarding the for and against committees that I feel needs to be addressed is Councilwoman Kennedy's comments about the people whose names appeared on the for and against list and how he was so surprised about the names that were all talking about, you know, we need it now and and we better hurry up and that he was surprised that they would appear on the pro list. And just to clarify perhaps for Mr. Kennedy, there is not a single member of, that I am aware of in this room that is pro library who has ever spoken against having a library. All have been 100% in support of the library and I just want to clarify the record on that. And so, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in chambers, Mr. Hamlet?
So, I just want to say that I appreciate our attorney's attempt to keep neutral and to keep specific numbers out of it, except in the explanatory explanation prior to the vote, I appreciate that. I want to, I want to kind of respond to the other gentleman's topic about, this vote is about whether we move, ask you to move forward pursuing funding, not about what the funding will be and how that will impact taxes. That in my mind comes, if the vote comes to yes pursue, then that would come later, next year, maybe in a November ballot about possible levy or bond if it has to come to that point. So, I do appreciate that. And again, I want to respond, I mean, Lynn already has, but the people that are on this committee were never, ever against a library. We always wanted the library to move forward, we made a decision about a building. And these people have been advocates for, for providing our community with a better facility for our, our community to use for library purposes. So, that's my comment for regarding this particular issue.
Thank you. Anybody else in chambers? Anybody online wish to make a comment? Okay, Nathan, you'll be advanced to a panelist here and then please introduce yourself. Tell us if you're a city resident and you have three minutes.
Hello, Nathan Wehrman, yes, I'm a city resident.
Thank you.
And I was just listening to the talk about what included in the advisory statements and such. I want to point out that in the, the guidebook for administrative rules for jurisdictions, which was updated in December, it says explanatory statement explains in common, excuse me, in common and neutral language, the measure's purpose, the financial impact and the laws and statutes that will be affected by the measure's passage. So, according to the guidelines and pamphlets for the revised code of Washington, it should include financial impact statements in there. That's really all I wanted to include because it sounded like the discussion was that it should be left out. But according to guidelines, it should be in there. And you can state that if you want to be a general or an about or however you want to word it, it's fine, but I just believe it should be included.
Okay. Thank you very much, Nathan.
Thanks.
Anybody else online wish to testify? Nope, okay. All right, so it's now time for council comments, again on the resolution, which we have a second on, so it is on the floor. Resolution 25-277. Council comments, Councilmember Kennedy.
Comment has to do with committees for and against. The committee for is strictly for to bring this to the citizens for a vote. It's not if they want a library or a community center. They want to bring this forward for a vote. That's what that's about. No one is saying that somebody is against the library. Always find it interesting how quickly it can turn, quickly it can turn, it's just amazing to me. Against is going to be talking about why they feel, if I understand this correctly, that this shouldn't go forward. I don't see anywhere in here where the argument's going to be, one saying, I don't want a library or a community center, and the other one saying, I want a library or a community center.
Point of information. Sean, can you clarify that? Because I want to make sure everybody on the council is clear about what the for and against committees are because my understanding is that it is for, go ahead, clarification on what the committees are for.
So, I indicated earlier from standpoint of the for and against committees relative to the question and the yes or no vote. If you're for, it would be, the for committee would be answering yes to the question. The against committees would be answering no to the question. The role of the for and against committees is to provide a statement. Their statement, unlike the explanatory statement, does not have to be neutral. So, they can write 250 words or less, why they believe the question should be answered affirmatively. And conversely, the against committee can advocate for, in their statement, for voting no and a negative. So, you know, they're, they're able to advocate one way or the other, unlike the city's obligation in putting it on the ballot to be, to be neutral.
So, the, the committee that is for would be for the city pursuing funding and construction of a new community center and library in the city of Liberty Lake.
That's correct, and to do that, you would vote yes.
Okay, so it's about pursuing the funding and construction of a new community center and library, not about whether to go forward with an advisory vote. That's the distinction.
Councilmember Van Orman.
Sean, one more question for you.
Sure.
And all of the descriptions, either for or against, they need to be accurate, correct? Is there anybody there to state the inaccuracies of, of descriptions for the for and against?
Not to punt on the question, but ultimately, the for and against statements are provided to the elections office and they make the determination of putting it in. And so, to the extent that they do anything, which I'm not sure they will in reviewing it, you know, they put the information in there relative to, you know, what the for and against committees are providing. I think it's similar to what you see in many other issues over the years in voting and you see in the voter pamphlets in for and against committees. So, the city doesn't have anything to do with it, the city doesn't regulate it, the city doesn't make revisions to it, the city hasn't participated in any way, shape or form. They can seek outside sources to, outside sources as far as putting that statement together, if they so choose, those committees so choose. And then obviously, they have until one o'clock on Thursday, you know, to submit those statements. And then those statements are handled then by the elections office.
Okay.
I follow Wendy that this has always been a thorn in the auditor's side. This state, these statements could be preaching packs of lies. And as a matter of First Amendment, they're not gonna edit them. They are what they are, so to be contributed to the voters' guide.
Additional comments, Councilmember Kurtz.
Just one small comment on the resolution itself on section three for ballot proposition, there's just a typo. I think ballot has one T.
I'll just make a couple of brief comments here since we're headed to the end. I want to say a few, a few things. When we first started having this conversation about a town square concept back in February, I and I know many other council members as well, always believed that it should go to a vote, that the citizens should have a say. My concern is that as we started to talk about it more and some of the comments that was, that were made, if we wouldn't have put it to a vote this year, it would have never gone to a vote. And so, again, while advisory votes are not preferable, in this case, this was our only mechanism to take this to the voters this year. And I think that's why it was so important. You know, we talked about a lot of the fact-based information and making sure that we have information out there. There's been a lot of comments online about how many visitors have visited the public, or visited our library in the past year and the numbers have been terrific, I think some of the numbers have shown like 68 or 69,000 visitors. But I think it's really important to remember that when we did the math, when the, when the last board report was given to us, about a third of those visitors were visitors who were attending a meeting there, who were not necessarily going for the library, but going because there was community space there. And so, that's why I think having this project of a community center and library on the ballot for citizens to give us their ultimate opinion on is so important. I do think we are missing out on an opportunity to be more forthright. to be more forthright with citizens about how much this is going to cost. And I know we couldn't figure out a way to get that in there, but I I do think when I read this question and when I read the ballot measure, I want to know what the cost is. And we have a ballpark. We know what the ballpark is. The ballpark is twelve to fifteen million dollars. But for whatever reason, we're willing to say that elsewhere, but we're not willing to say that here. And so I would just presume that if we're going to talk about this issue for the rest of the year, that we shouldn't say it's going to be twelve to fifteen million dollars if we're going to be consistent. Because we don't know. That's what I'm hearing. We don't know what the cost is going to be. Could be twenty million dollars, could be ten million dollars. We're going to go out and tell the citizens that these are the options and these are the costs. But we're not willing to tell all the citizens that these are the options and these are the costs. And so I think that is one glaring hole in in this in this ballot measure. Nevertheless, I do think it's important to push, put this forward. And I'm comfortable with the people that we've selected for the pro and are the for and against sides. And I think that it is time to make sure that citizens have the the ultimate authority. And whatever the citizens say, I think is going to be is going to be the responsibility of this council to follow up on that. The citizens say yes, then to fund it to a greater extent for next year. And if the citizens say no, then to look at other options as well for that funding. Additional comments? Going once. Sounds like we're adjourned. Nope, not yet. We got a vote. All right, so resolution twenty-five dash two seven seven. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Nay. All right.
I have a procedural question. Never mind. I don't.
Okay, vote passes four to two. All right. Thank you all very much. We are now up to citizen comments again. Number ten on the agenda. You are welcome to come up. Give us three minutes of your comments or testimony. And again, just tell us who you are and if you live in the city and you have three minutes. Is there anyone here in chambers who wishes to testify? Okay, anyone online? Nope. Going once, going twice. All right, thank you all very much, and we will adjourn.